I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Retirement System Board of Trustees meeting Friday, May 21st, 2021. Call to order at 8:02 a.m. We'll begin with the roll call. Myself, Lee Collick, serving as Chair. I'm attending from Royal Oak, Michigan. We have Brett Nelson, serving as Vice Chair.
Present from Royal Oak, Michigan.
We have Commissioner Kyle DeBuck, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Monica Hunt, serving as trustee.
Present in Detroit.
City Manager Paul Brake, serving as trustee.
Present here in Royal Oak.
Also present, we have Julie Rudd, Board Chief Administrative Officer, Board Secretary, Board Treasurer.
Present, and Lisa's present as well. However, she cannot get on the screen, or she cannot get the ability to talk. So she emailed me. She's having some problems, so.
Sounds good. We have Tom Micho, Ward Attorney.
Present.
And Terry Gurlik, Investment Advisor.
Present.
Lisa is now in the meeting room.
Okay, yeah, I can hear you now, and I can respond. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to public comments. Carol, did we have anything on either of these two meetings?
There are no members of the public in the audience to make comments today.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that the Board approve the agenda for May 21st, 2021. Is there support?
There's support.
I have support by Brett, all in favor. I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes for April 16th, 2021. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Under applications, we have Benjamin E. Clark of the Fire Department, Local 431 Bargaining Unit, 29 years and 11 months. He purchased three years of contract time. Requests requirement retirement date of June 27th, 2021. Eligible based on years of service and age. I'm going to make a motion to approve the application as listed. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The motion carries. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Terry for investments.
Hey, thanks very much. Good morning, everybody. And I'm going to try to share my screen here. So let's see what I can do. Where is the right? Oh, there we go. Everybody see that? Everyone, okay. So I know at the last meeting, you, the Board had asked that we provide a review of our relationship, as you're periodically required to do. And so I put this slide together and tried to think about our task in a variety, from a variety of dimensions. So first off, I think one of the things that we've been able to do is create a very well diversified portfolio. And we're currently invested across 11 different asset classes. And within those 11 asset classes, we're very well diversified by manager. Each managers have various styles, value, growth, quantitative, fundamental, top-down, bottom-up, variety of ways in which you can go after the markets. Each of those styles tend to come in and out of favor at different times in the market. And so we want to diversify away that risk if we can. So smoother ride and hopefully hit some, some consistent singles and doubles over time. So right now, the 31 public managers in the public markets, you know, equities, fixed income. There are eight real estate managers, and with private equity, we're still building that portfolio. Obviously, it's about 10%. The commitment's about 10% invested. Ultimately, it'll be 10 to 15 different fund within that, that implementation as, as well. So you're really protected from single manager risk, both in terms of the volatility that sometimes happens when they go in and out of favor, or if they make a big mistake, because people are human, or something happens to the organization. And so you're, you're, you're really insulated from that. Also, as we look back over the relationship, hopefully, the Board has found that, that we've provided significant education and assistance to the Board. I know when we first came in, alternative asset classes were very new to the Board, and through both the asset allocation discussions that we've had over time, as well as the educational sessions that we've had, we, the Board has built up a knowledge base about some of these asset classes that has enabled you to become more comfortable with the idea of diversifying. And then we think going into the alternative areas is an important source of diversification. And so we're, we're pleased with how we've built up that allocation as well over time. And of course, with our model, we have the responsibility for hiring and firing managers. So we take that exclusive fiduciary responsibility. And of course, we have to comply with the statutory restrictions as well. And so we relieve the Board of both the fiduciary responsibility in terms of selection of managers, and equally important really is just allowing the Board to focus on important issues and not have to worry about doing some micro analysis, if you will, of each manager and how they're doing and making a decision about whether the managers have overweighted sectors correctly over time, or what have you, whether they're doing a good job or bad job, and then having to change if necessary, which of course is in the public fund context, the municipal context, is can be a challenge to issue RFPs and go through that process as well. So a lot of administrative work, a lot of time that hopefully we've taken that, that off of the shoulders of, of, of the Board. And then finally, performance. We, we think that we've generated good performance over time, both on an, on an absolute as well as a relative basis. So the absolute returns, which of course, I mean, we benefit from the, whatever the markets are doing, but, but we've been able to position the portfolio in a way that we've achieved overall absolute returns that are greater than your actuarial funding requirements. So hopefully, you know, that, that's an important contribution towards closing the funding gap. And on a relative basis, the portfolios have been doing, managers have generally done a good job relative to their benchmark adding value. We are passively implemented in certain asset classes like large capitalist equities, but others such as international equities, we're actively managing, that we're actively managing. The managers have, have, have done a good job over time. So I hope this is responsive to your request. Happy to answer any questions or address any of these items. Okay, so let's go to the next slide.
Very own question.
Yes, sir.
It's great. Is there, is it a fair way to gauge performance to look at the overall performance of our portfolio versus market performance overall? Like, are we outperforming?
Yes, I think that's right. That's a good question. That's what I mean by, there are definitely, there are several important metrics for performance. One is exactly that, which, which I was referring to as relative performance, you know, relative to the benchmark. So are the managers beating their indices? And they, they generally, they, they have been. So you know, always we're faced with, with a decision within an asset class. Do we want to be passively implemented, in which case we're going to get the market's return? Or do we want to be actively managing that asset class and have the opportunity to add value over, over, over the benchmark? So so yes, that is an important consideration, and that's what I was referring to when I, when I was talking about relative returns.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we all know about the quarter already. We talked last, last, last month. What I wanted to do was just point out a couple of topics here. One is the markets have really changed in, in the last several months compared to what was driving them over the last several years. And by that, I mean that really since we were hired to some extent, I mean, if you were just in the average 60-40 portfolio, or just in, in, in US equities, you were just in core fixed income, you did fine. You did well. Diversification didn't matter. But really starting what we saw, starting last year, if you look at the light bars, really from September onward now, you really see the effect of diversification. So for example, that first set of bars there, international versus US. For a long time, the dark blue bar, you're better off just being in US equities. Now, all of a sudden, international is adding value. Emerging markets versus developed, the same, the same view here as well. Emerging markets starting to add value relative to, to the developed world. They're really going across the, the, the spectrum. I won't go through each one. Small cap versus large cap. Again, you were better off for the longest time just being in, in, in large cap. Didn't matter if you were in small cap. You know, longer-term history in all these cases would suggest that, yes, what, small cap, international, emerging markets, all should be producing higher rates of return over the long term. For that five-year period, it really didn't seem to matter. In fact, it was just the, just the opposite. Now we're reverting back to diversification mattering in that, in, in, in these asset classes really adding additional value to the portfolio. So it's a sea change in some extent for, in what we're seeing over the last several months in the market. And fixed income, again, we talked about this probably last, last meeting. We'll spend a lot of time on it, and that is what we're seeing. The big change this year in the markets has been the rise in interest rates. Interest rates have, as we know, we talked previously, have gone up significantly. You see that in the, the dark blue bar on the left there compared to where rates were a year ago in the green, and even where they were, or where they were the end of the year, I should say, in the green, and where they were a year ago in the, in the, I don't know, line. The rates have gone up. That, that's important for a couple of reasons. One is, of course, it's harder to make money in just pure investment-grade fixed income, you know, a treasury security. Interest rates go up, you're going to lose principal value on the bond. So again, diversification to other areas of fixed income market is important. The second thing is important to note is that as interest rates rise, that makes the equity market more vulnerable to corrections. Because as interest rates rise, the PE multiple on the, on, on the market tends to compress. So if a market was trading at 20x earnings with very low inflation, if all of a sudden we have, say, 3% inflation or something like that, market might be trading at only 15x earnings. So that compression from 20x earnings to 15x earnings would be quite a, it would be a significant impact on, on, on value. So higher interest rates tend to, tend to create headwinds for, for, for the equity market. And, and finally, before we get to the numbers, and the same thing we talked about was that last year, coming into this year, the markets were really dependent on what was happening with COVID. Now, with the market, with the economy reopening and the vaccines in place, we're looking at very strong growth this year. So the, the, the the economy is looking pretty bullish in terms of, of the type of economic growth we can expect, which is all good, except for as you get very strong economic growth, as we're starting to see, it can put pressure on inflation. And we have seen inflation take up a little bit here over the last couple of months. And that will be the issue that investors will be focused on really through the remainder of the year. So all the talk this year will be about what's happening to inflation. Is it just, is it just temporary? Or are we in for a longer-term bottom of inflation? Is the Fed going to have to raise interest rates? That will be the primary focus of, of the market and the source of, the primary source of volatility in the market as, as, as opinions change as we go through the year. All right. So now, performance, here's your allocations. Again, I've talked about the different asset classes that we're in. A little overweight equities, as you can see, but that's because we have a 5% allocation to, to private equity, which you see down on the alternatives line, GPA 5. That's the private equity allocation of a target of 5%. That take, as we've talked about, it's going to take years, multiple years of investments to get to that target. And so we're underweight private equity in response. We're overweight some of the other asset classes slightly, but all as expected. And all pretty much in line with, with how we're managing the portfolio. And then in terms of performance, it was a good month. So maybe make this a little bit bigger. Hopefully, it's a little easier to see. As you can see, it was the portfolios of about 3.1% for, for the month. Markets, this continue to move higher, at least through, at least through April. You know, we've seen some more back and forth here recently in, in, in May, a little volatility. But through April, as you can see, through another 3.1%, leading to a year-to-date number of 6.4, 6.3 on a, on a net basis, comfortably ahead of the benchmark, which is 5.35 so far on a year-to-date basis. So again, indicative of the active managers adding value over and above their, their benchmarks. That now means, as you can see, we added for the, for the month, we started the month at 177.6 million, 0.5 million. Had net cash flows out for the month of about 1.9 million, but we had another gain of 5.5 million, leaving the balance at 181, just about 181.2 million dollars as of April 30th. We've drilled down a little bit to see where the returns came from. You can see in, in the, the, the green bars there, you see total equities up 4%. So equities continue to be, be, be strong here this year, and have been on a tear for the last year, really. As, as the markets rebounded after the huge sell-off in the first quarter last year, the trend continues up here, as you can see, up for just about 4.1% for, for, for the month. US equities were up 5%, led by large cap, which was up 5.3 for the month, and small cap was up 4.3. Just about the same returns, 11.8, which is really extraordinary return over, over four months, 11.8% year-to-date, or 11.9% for small cap. And then you can see over the trailing one year, that really strong rebound of 45.9%. Small cap up 78.2% over the trailing 12 months. International equities were up for the quarter, lagged US, as you see, up 2.85. Managers did, did a, a good job, but right, pretty much right in line with the benchmark for the, for, for the month. 2.9% for the World Equity Fund, and then 2.2% for the, the Emerging Market Equity Specialists. And importantly, a year-to-date, you can see the returns there again, 6.9 versus the benchmark at 6.5, 6.3 versus 4.8. So things seem to be moving along fine there as well. Fixed income. We did have a positive month as interest rates did come back down a little bit after, after spiking up earlier. So, so positive for the month. Negative for the last three months, and negative for the year. And as you can see, it's really core fixed income, that investment-grade bond portfolio did rebound, up 90 basis points, but on the year, down 2.7% really suffering from the effect of the rising interest rates, pretty much in line with the benchmark, but as an asset class, down as interest rates rose. Similarly, emerging market debt had a good month. 2.6, which was good to see, because it had taken it out of the chin earlier in the year. But still down three, just over 3% on a year-to-date basis. Again, same reason, as well as some weakening of the dollar in some of those periods. But primarily, the rise in interest rates hurt emerging market debt, although as you look out over one year, you know, still a pretty nice double-digit return. High yield, on the other hand, is much less interest rate sensitive. Was up 1.7% for, for, for the, for the month. It was a good month, but importantly, on a year-to-date basis so far, even though interest rates are rising, you see high yield of five, almost 5.2%. So that, that's a nice offset to the more interest rate sensitive areas like investor-grade fixed income. So that's really helped. That diversification has helped the portfolio as well. And then core property, up 2.8%, up about five, just under 5% for the year. So bouncing back nicely after last year, when, when things were a little soft in the middle of the years, as people were worried about what's happening to rental rates with everybody staying home, particularly in the office space, as well as retail. And we're seeing a, a, a nice rebound there as well. And then finally, structured credit, that continues its strong rebound. And up about, well, well, pretty much flat, I should say, for the month. But as you can see, on a year-to-date basis, up 13.8%. And of course, you see the, the impact of the, of the trailing one year. And finally, it's only $218,000 invested so far. But, but private equity is, is on track here and starting to produce some nice returns already, which is surprising, because typically you lose money in the first year or two of private equity investing. But we're off to a very good start there. So pleased to see how that is unfolding. So overall, markets continue to march higher here in the month. It was a good month. And, and rates came down a little bit for the month, which helped fixed income recover some of their earlier losses. And, and all they can say is, is you know, there will be volatility. We're seeing it this month, but we, we continued strong economy should help to support the overall markets going through the remainder of the year. So with that, unless, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'll stop sharing my screen.
And anyone else have anything for Terry? I appreciate that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I appreciate all the hard work that you do, too.
Thanks. Much appreciated.
We don't acknowledge that. We kind of take it for granted all the time. I do appreciate it, so.
Much appreciated here, too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before Terry leaves, could he just, if he, if he cares to, explain his thoughts on where valuations are in the equity market?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Yeah. And that's one of the things that the, the market, investors are concerned about. The market is very highly valued right now. Trading at a, at a, at a high PE ratio relative to its history. And that, again, one of the things that makes the market vulnerable, if interest rates continue to rise, that's going to put some pressure on the market. Counteracting to that, however, is that, remember last year, we talked about the, you know, the FAANG stocks, the mega-cap tech stocks, a handful of stocks that, five, six stocks that were 25% of the index, and they just had a life of their own. They're very highly valued. And now what we're seeing is we're seeing a rotation, the more value-oriented of stocks, which are much more reasonably valued. So yes, the overall market is expensive, and that is a risk. But we think the, the, the rotation is healthy because leadership is, is transferring to, to stocks that are not astronomically valued. So we think that'll help to put a bottom on the market here. But yes, certainly, there is still one vulnerability, but we think that rotation helps to take some of that risk off the table.
So are you thinking of a correction still? Or you think those, that switch the value was just going to net it all out?
Well, I, I, I guess the, the best way to answer that is, you know, no one's really got the crystal ball. And, and we're not going to try to time the market here and say, we're not going to say to you, oh, rent interest rates are going to rise. We think we should be out of the, the equity markets right, right now, because history has shown that that's a very hard game to, to employ. So we're going to stay invested. And we're just, we're just thinking that, that, you know, the vast majority of, of the portfolio is in these more reasonably valued areas of the market, you know, while 25% is really overvalued, 75% of the market looks more, more reasonably valued. So we think we're, we think we're relatively protected here. I would not want to put all the money into a growth style of investing that was really hot last year, because that's the style that's really getting hurt this year. Probably continue to do so.
No, I'm not suggesting market timing. I'm just wondering if you want to throw something out for expectations because of the.
Yeah, well, it, it's hard. Our, our view is that, you know, we've, we've had such strong returns here this year that it's likely that the, the remaining months, eight months, we're not, we're, number one, we don't expect to see a sort of returns we're seeing now. But we still think we can, we can close the year higher than, than now. Whether that's another 2, 2, 3%, 4%, who knows? It's going to be a case where somewhere along the way, the market is going to be down 10% plus. You know, we don't know when. That volatility exists. It's normal. 10% corrections happen about once every 13, 14 months. We're due for one. But overall, by the end of the year, we think we'll be higher than where we are now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Terry?
Should I jump off, or should we do dates? Oh, you can do the rest of the agenda. Sorry.
That's fine. We can do dates real quick. First, I'll make a motion to receive and file the the information as provided. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We will receive and file. So anyone have any issues with June 18th? At 8:00 a.m.?
That works fine with me.
I'm traveling that day.
For just the day or for the week?
I am. Yeah, just that weekend.
Okay. With Thursday work?
About the 11th of June?
11th works.
It'll be tight, but I should have numbers by then.
That works better for me, too.
Okay. Any issues at all with June 11th? Okay. Ryan, are you good with that as well?
Yeah, I'm good with June 11th.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ron. That brings us to legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On such a nice sunny day, I'm just going to recommend you adopt the, the four reports as presented, please.
Sounds good. I like that. I'm going to make a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to other, which we have already covered. The consultant review. consultant review, the presentation section. Julie aside, then, I see the note Retirement Board Trust trustee election update. City clerk determined that an election was not necessary for the police fire representative as Brett Nelson was the only person running. Congratulations, Brett. Your new term expires five thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Did you have anything else, Julie?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. The date of the next meeting has been set as June eleventh, twenty twenty-one. I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I mean, yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we need a break before we jump into the next meeting.
Okay, well, thank you all. Have a great week.
Thank you, Terry, as well. Oh, you know what? Lisa, for the, I think they would have been eight thirty-two as well that we uh we adjourned. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the retiree healthcare investment board meeting for Friday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Call to order at eight thirty-three AM. We'll begin with roll call. Myself, Lee Collick, serving as chair, attending from Royal Oak. We have Brett Nelson serving as chair.
And present from Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Kyle DeBuck serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Monica Hunt serving as trustee.
President Andy Tright.
Thank you. And city manager Paul Brake serving as trustee.
Uh, present in Royal Oak.
Thank you. Also present, we have Julie Rudd, Board Chief Administrative Officer, Board Secretary, Board Treasurer.
Present.
Thank you, Lisa Genorg, Financial Analyst, Pension Technician.
Present.
Thank you, Tom Mishaw, Board Attorney.
Present.
And Brian Green, Investment Advisor.
Project.
Next will be public comment, which there is not. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is there support?
Brett's.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion that the board approve the minutes for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us to investments. I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Green.
Great. So we have a couple pieces to cover here. Um there are a number of different items, really, from a correspondent standpoint. One that I would encourage you to read that's really meant from a pure educational standpoint is our research team put out what a four or five page um really brief update and overview of cryptocurrencies and their uh their rapid growth and kind of where they sit. I'll be brutally honest, uh from my standpoint, the more I read about things like uh Dogecoin and Bitcoin and everything else, the more I realize I don't know about it. It's kind of one of those instances where um it, you know, every every time I try to learn more, I realize just how much less I actually know about how things operate and how they work. So given how much press that's been receiving as of late, you know, particularly when in in a two-day period, you see a twenty to thirty percent swing in value in Bitcoin as an example, wanted to make sure that you had at least some kind of foundational education about it. Um I've been at this long enough to realize like that I can never say never. I don't have any expectations in the near term of talking to clients about investing in crypto assets. Um but I can never say never, but I don't see anything on the horizon in terms of saying. I think that this should be part of an allocation for a public employee retirement system or public employee retiree healthcare system. But it's important from an education standpoint that you're aware of of a lot of what's going on in the world. And this is certainly something that's been popular enough that it's being quoted in the news now alongside of what the Dow or the S and P's movement was on a day-to-day basis. So we have a couple other things to address. We have the uh full first quarter performance report. We have the April update from a performance standpoint, and then we have a response to uh the the request made at the last meeting, just in terms of, give us an evaluation of where you are over the now four-year term of our relationship between Anco and the City of Royal Oak. So let's start with uh good news. I'm gonna bring up the April flash performance report. Here. So April was a continuation of the good news of the first quarter and a continuation of the good news really since uh since late since late March of last year. So we're now fully thirteen months into the recovery. And what we've seen here in April and what we've seen so far here on a calendar year-to-date basis is really a repeat of the massive moves you saw in the markets in the fourth quarter of last year. And that's really the market reacting to the prospects of reopening, of continued vaccinations uh and um concerns over rising inflation and what the Fed is gonna do from a from a rising interest rate standpoint. Um so we've seen, for example, for the quarter, or sorry, for the month, the S and P was up a little over five percent. Small cap stocks up just over two. On a year-to-date basis, the numbers are nothing short of fabulous. Uh, you know, S and P up eleven point eight on a year-to-date basis. Small cap stocks, that'd be the Russell two thousand index up north of fifteen, and international markets in positive territory as well. But a six and a half or four point eight percent return really pales in comparison to the strong gains we continue to see out of things from a U.S. equity standpoint. So the story continues to be U.S. dominance, but that leadership has shifted from a U.S. standpoint from large cap stocks to small cap stocks and has shifted from growth stocks to value stocks. Uh so for the month, from a fixed income standpoint, we did see rates actually tick back a little bit lower, which is a welcome relief, I think, for anyone looking to to borrow money in any capacity. Um but still in negative territory on a year-to-date basis. And again, we kind of view this just as the the fixed income, fixed income market reacting to concerns over uh inflation, concerns over some overheated economic growth. I will tell you that that economic growth is certainly welcome, but from a historical standpoint, seeing some numbers like this has usually resulted in the Fed stepping in and raising rates to try to slow things down. See, you have this kind of bifurcated effect going on of the market saying, we think the Fed's gonna have to step in and raise rates because from a historical standpoint, they've done it. But the Fed stepping and up and saying, no, we're gonna keep things low for longer because we want the economy to recover. We want unemployment to recover. You know, we really are willing to let this economic growth run harder and faster than we have from a historical standpoint because the economy needs it from a health standpoint. And you can see that bear out, for example, if you look at how interest rates have moved so far this year. Sure, the short end of the of the yield curve, so things like a three-month treasury bill or a two-year treasury note, those are gonna be anchored and tied to what the Fed does with respect to the Fed funds rate. So that's where you can see, for example, a three-month treasury bill went from paying a whopping point oh six percent at the end of December to paying point zero zero four percent at the end of April. So short-term interest rates have gone from low to even lower. It's rounded up to point zero zero. Two-year hasn't moved at all really either from point one two up to point one six. So again, Fed's saying we're gonna keep rates low for as long as possible and longer than we have in the past in economic recoveries like this has kept the short end at zero. But you've seen some big movements on the long end. The ten-year, for example, has gone from point nine one up to one point six three. The third year has gone from one sixty-four up to two point three. So that's the market's impact on things from an interest rate standpoint and saying, okay, you're telling us you're gonna keep things low for long, but when we look at past playbooks and how this works out, we're concerned about inflation. We're concerned about you raising rates. So the market's gonna demand a higher interest rate for for securities. That's what's driving these negative returns from an overall fixed income standpoint. The one bright spot continues to be high yield, really, really highly correlated, so a tight relationship to what happens from a stock market standpoint. In addition to a heavy dose of energy companies in high yield, and we'll touch on this in just a second, but given the recovery you've seen in the stock market and notably the recovery you've seen in energy prices and energy stocks, that's gonna be a big driver of returns for for high yield. I always think this is interesting from a sector standpoint. So on a year-to-date basis, the S and P is up eleven point eight percent, but those five hundred stocks are actually broken out into eleven different sectors. Number one performer so far this year, energy, up thirty-one point six percent. Second best performer, financials, at twenty-three and a half. Uh in fourth from last is information technology, only up seven point three percent. So you've seen a pretty significant shift in leadership from last year to this year. Because if you go back and look at twenty twenty, tech stocks were the number one performer and energy stocks were the worst performer. And that kind of is twenty twenty in a nutshell, right? No one drove anywhere and everybody relied upon technology to to get to work, to get to school, uh to really get anything done. But as we've seen the market reopen, we're now back into real estate. We're now back into things from an industrials and materials standpoint. So you're seeing a number of those sectors that did not perform well last year just absolutely kick into high gear here on a on a year-to-date basis. So how did V Fair use this chart on a monthly basis? I think this is really powerful just in terms of kind of the report part back on the decision to issue bonds to fully fund the liability. Overall return for the retiree healthcare trust over the last four years, nine point two four percent. Uh cash flow is essentially neutral over that time period, started with a hundred and five point four million in terms of the contribution in from consolidating MERS. That's that kick up you see here here in the summer of eighteen. And then as we've made uh benefit payments out of the trust, that results in the basically cash flow being flat over that four years. But this is where it gets powerful, that nine point two percent return in dollar terms. It's forty-seven point three million dollars in value added to the overall trust. So that compares pretty favorably to the borrowing cost, and it also compares favorably to the long-term assumed rate of return of of seven point two five. So you can look back at this and say that the decision made to bond, the decision made to invest these assets into the markets has been a successful one over the last four years. So where are we from a performance standpoint? So I've been really, really pleased with the recovery we've seen, not only in terms of positive numbers, but for a number of the underlying managers. So we've had a struggle for a couple of years, just in terms of a bit of a value bias in portfolio and a bit more small cap exposure than the market. And that's been a drag on performance in previous years, but it's actually been a big driver of outperformance here, particularly as we've seen the market shift into recovery mode. So for the month, up three and a half percent versus policy index up three point two, so a point three percent outperformance. On a year-to-date basis, now up seven fifty-five, benchmark up about six forty, so a full uh one point one percent ahead on a year-to-date basis. And in the last year, almost a two percent margin of outperformance, overall portfolio up thirty-two point three versus benchmark up thirty point six. So seeing a significant recovery, this gap in performance you see here on a sense inception basis, so really measuring the last four years was over two percent at some point in the summer of last year. That's now close to less than one point three. So this recovery you've seen in performance as of late has done a really good job of closing the gap in performance on a sense inception basis, measuring the entire duration of the relationship. So we're really encouraged with the numbers we're seeing as of late, the recovery in the portfolio, not only from a performance standpoint, but from a manager-by-manager standpoint, and most importantly, closing that gap on a longer-term basis and bringing us back closer to that policy index. So where's the performance coming from? No surprise, largest allocation domestic equity, about fifty-one percent of the portfolio, up fourteen point two for the year so far, about two point three percent uh ahead of the benchmark, so solid recovery there from a performance standpoint. And these are, these are fun numbers to talk about, up fifty-three percent in the last year versus benchmark up just shy of fifty-one, so two percent margin, again, seeing significant closure in terms of performance on a longer-term basis versus relevant benchmark. International equity, bit of a mixed bag. Still in positive territory for the year, up about three percent, but underperformed benchmark up six and a half. The numbers are closer to in line on a longer-term basis. Fixed income, outperforming across the board. These numbers are nowhere near as exciting as what we see from a equity market standpoint, but still a necessary part of the portfolio. You know, with us needing to pay benefits on a monthly basis for healthcare premiums, despite the fact that we have low expectations out of fixed income from return standpoint because of what can happen, for example, in March of twenty twenty, or because we know that market corrections happen on a pretty regular basis, we've got a fixed income allocation as the, as the ballast to the portfolio to make sure that we can cover needed cash flow and allow the other parts of the portfolio to recover. Second, I just wanna make sure it's still here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I was dialed in with my uh phone to make sure that my internet could screw it up and that, of course, just call that call drop. Um so fixed income positive across the board uh versus benchmark. Real estate continues to be a positive contributor. You know, no, no updates here for April, but what we saw in the first quarter was encouraging as the market started to really unfall. And we saw transaction volumes increase significantly. So on a manager-by-manager basis, as I've mentioned, the bright spots really within the domestic equity allocation. So those managers, notably Sizer and Cora, our mid-cap manager and our small-cap manager that have been laggards to the portfolio are now the biggest drivers of performance, not only in terms of having the allocation to small and mid-cap stocks has been beneficial because it's outperformed large cap, but also these two managers have had a significant recovery in performance as of late. You know, Sizer is an example. About five percent ahead of their benchmark on a year-to-date basis. And Cora, about five percent ahead on a year-to-date basis. So as you've seen, small cap come back into favor, as you've seen value-oriented names come back into favor, it's been a tremendous push from a performance standpoint for these two portfolios and seeing a really nice recovery in performance out of those as well. International, bit of a mixed bag. First Eagle with their more conservative positioning lagged a bit. Uh the GQG portfolio, the replace Vontable was a nice addition. About a percent and a half, almost two percent ahead of their benchmark for the for the month. J P Morgan, emerging markets, bit more of a growth bias here, doing all right in the long term, but because value's been in favor so far this year, they have lagged a little bit. But here in May, we've actually seen a significant recovery in performance as well. And finally, fixed income and real estate, no surprises here, outperformance across the board. Both Barrett and Loomis continue to do a really, really great job from an overall performance standpoint. And Priest with their core plus fixed income portfolio continues to uh to do a, in our view, a fabulous job from an overall performance standpoint. So the story's been and continues to be, you know, the recovery you see in in value names, the recovery you see in small-cap names, and that's really been a tremendous tailwind performance, tremendous boost of performance for the overall portfolio. And seeing these numbers on a near-term basis really, really turn in terms of performance versus benchmark and helping to close that gap on a long-term standpoint. So before I shift over to relationship summary, I just wanna pause and see if there are any questions about performance, markets, portfolio.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Is there any recommended changes that you think that we need be considering or looking at moving forward or?
That so get through advisor review. You know, we had talked two meetings ago about some changes from a real estate standpoint. Uh the other piece that we'd like to talk about over the balance of the year is, given the the cash flow nature of the trust and what we need to cover premium payments, um is looking at things like private debt. You know, the the idea being an asset class that targets a high single-digit return. So this is not something that's trying to shoot the lights out from an overall return standpoint, but generates a, you know, a nine to ten percent return that is predominantly payable in cash on a quarterly basis because it's private loans to companies. It's really um, it's the, it's the lending side of the private equity world. Um, and the, the beauty there is, is it's an attractive return in terms of trying to earn seven and a quarter, and this is something that's earning a higher rate than that. But rather than having to wait five, six, seven years for the portfolio to get built, companies to be improved and sold, it's a loan. So it's interest paid to us on a monthly and quarterly basis. So it's, it's return that you can spend and it's return that you can use to meet monthly and quarterly cash flow obligations.
Is there a significant cost been involved with that or where's the?
Yeah, I mean, cost, I, I have two costs. There's the management fee and a lot of them are around, you know, point seven five to one percent. So it's more expensive than traditional fixed income, but there's also more legwork being done because they're managing a private loan portfolio. I'd also say it's more costly because it's illiquid. So it's not just, you know, to me, it's not just the, the true, you know, what is, what do I have to pay on an annual basis to get this investment? It's also, you know, if the fixed income markets, if I would have been better off in, in publicly traded fixed income, you know, versus private, there's the cost there, but given where we are from an interest rate standpoint, I think that's a pretty far stretch. So that's something that I want to pursue around this, uh, boardroom table over the course of this year, just given where we are from a return expectation standpoint. It's just finding parts of the market that aren't dependent upon the S and P going up tomorrow to make sure that we continue to be successful from an investment standpoint.
Yeah. Sounds good to me. Does anyone else have any questions for Brian before he moves on to the next section of his presentation? All right, please continue, Brian.
All right, so in terms of evaluation of the relationship, um, the investment policy statement, this language is in the original version. This language is unchanged, you know, it was approved a couple of meetings ago. There are three objectives laid out from an evaluation of investment managers and the investment consultant. Those three are, um, from bottom to top, generate a return at or above the, the actuarial's assumed rate of return. So that's a seven point two five percent bogey. It is versus peers, so give me some context on how others, other public funds around the nation are doing it. Generate a return for me that ranks at or above median, so that would be fiftieth percentile on a rolling three-year and five-year basis. And then finally, using those same timelines on a rolling three and five-year basis, is give me a portfolio that outperforms a relevant benchmark. So on a three and five-year basis, three and five-year basis, beat a relevant benchmark, beat more than half of my peers and meet or exceed my return standpoint. So looking at results as of March thirty-one, I pulled this out, kind of give you a, uh, I was gonna say a black and white report card, but it's really a green and red report card. So we have the three performance standards. The first being meet or exceed the policy index on a rolling three and five-year basis. Well, the three-year number of, uh, nine point four seven or nine point three at a net of fees basis is behind the policy index. So that standard has not been met in the last year. That is about one point three five percent behind. We don't have a five-year number yet because we started in April of twenty seventeen, so we're four years in. So the other measure of that, we don't have a timeframe yet, we haven't reached that five-year anniversary. Um, of note, you know, I'm disappointed to say we've lagged in the last year. I am encouraged by the fact that the policy index, that ten point seven six percent return actually ranks on the twenty-first percentile. So the policy index, the asset which would be a representation of the asset allocation that's been built, and that's the biggest driver of long-term success, ranks in the twenty-first percentile. So the asset allocation decisions actually beat seventy-nine percent of your peers around the country. The return in the last year, nine point four seven, actually ranks in the fifty-first percentile. So that's the second measure. I think it's a bit of a rounding error, the median plan for that same time period was nine point four seven. So I suspect, you know, if you go out to three decimal points, that's the difference between the two. But effectively on a three-year basis, it isn't, the return has been median. Um, so we'd say that's kind of a push from an overall, uh, result standpoint. And then finally, on a longer term basis, meet or exceed that assumed rate of return, that's obviously done it on a three-year basis, uh, but going back four years, that eight point four three percent is obviously really compelling and it's done a great job of maintaining your fully funded status versus the, the original seven point seven five percent return assumption. And then obviously versus the lower seven point two five. So one criteria definitely met, one criteria, uh, is right in line. One criteria, uh, below expectations, but seeing a really significant recovery here in the last year or so in, uh, in that gap. So a couple of other comments, just, I think to help put things into context. You know, that track record goes back to twenty seventeen. Trails the policy index by one point three five percent over that time period. As I'd mentioned, the three-year return is right in the middle of the pack. We like to see that higher. Uh, the asset allocation decision has obviously, uh, been a good one. So this really comes down to individual manager performance. And because of that bit of a value bias to the portfolio that's penalized uh, on a longer term basis, but has been a huge benefit to the portfolio here, uh, in the last, say, eight to nine months. Digging a little bit deeper, you know, kind of distill down, tell me how that one point three five percent underperformance came to be. Um, about a third of that, so point five of that one point three five is because of the overweight to small cap stocks in the portfolio. So the domestic equity allocation has about twenty percent in small cap stocks versus if you just looked at the market, the market weighting is eight. So that difference in performance, because small cap is underperformed large cap for the past couple of years, is responsible for point five of that one point three five. So put another way, if we were market weight, we wouldn't be one point three five percent behind, we'd be point eight five. And that point eight five is really because of underperformance from a couple of different managers. Now here's where it gets interesting. Starting in the fourth quarter of last year, that overweight, so what's hurt us in the long run has actually been the single biggest driver of strong performance in the near term. So as the market has shifted towards rewarding small cap stocks versus large cap, which I'd say is pretty healthy, given where we are from a valuation standpoint, that's a good thing to see from a market performance, tells us that we can probably continue to see things stay at this level, if not rally a little higher. But the outperformance we saw in the fourth quarter of last year and the first quarter of this year, and then as well as looking at what's gone on in April and May, has actually closed that gap from one point three five percent down to one point zero one. So in the last month and a half, given that continued strong performance, the gap has closed now to essentially one percent over the long haul. So that gives us a lot of confidence that we're going to continue to see this gap close. And to the extent the board offers us a bit more patience, you're going to be pleased with the overall results as we look out over the course of the year. Show you a little bit more here. Small cap versus large caps, and this is just looking at calendar year returns. So this is why, go back and look at twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. The difference between small cap and large cap stocks in each of those years was six point six percent in twenty eighteen and six percent in twenty nineteen. So having heavier weighting towards small cap stocks because they're undervalued um, hurt performance in the last, in those two calendar years. Helped in twenty twenty and has helped so far here in, in twenty twenty-one. The other piece that's been a bit of an impact from a performance standpoint as well has been, you know, a number of the active managers employed are ones that will keep pace in a strongly rising market. So they'll keep pace in a positive market, but when things get rough, they do a really, really good job of protecting capital. And when I think about a plan that's a hundred percent funded and a plan that's used bond issuance to get to that hundred percent funded ratio, I want to have a little bit of defense on the table. If I have to say one big misstep we've made in the last four years, and this comes with a, a dose of humility is, I underestimated the impact that the Federal Reserve could have and that government intervention could have on driving markets higher. So in the last four years, so that's sixteen quarters, we've only had three that were in negative territory. And one of those was a one percent decline, so that's really not a, a negative market. So in terms of a number of these managers that have done really well in the long haul, like in Cora, like First Eagle, like Sizer, typical markets where they shine, where things get a little rocky, we just haven't had that opportunity. But where we've seen things shift a little bit here as of late, they've really kicked in and have done very, very well. So what I want to leave you with is, you know, from a criteria standpoint, I would argue that we've met two out of the three. And on the third, we're making significant recovery in, uh, in that performance differential. Um, it's an honor to work, I, I live here, so this is one, you know, that's, that's, the, the retiree healthcare trust is one that's very near and dear to my heart every time I see a, a white Ford truck drive down the street. You know, this is a portfolio that I think about. I'd humbly request a little bit more patience from your end, and I think you'll be pleasantly, uh, pleasantly rewarded for that patience. Desk center prepared comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Brian. Nice job. I appreciate you putting that together for sure. Does anyone have any, uh, questions or comments for Brian? Julie?
Thank you. Um, Brian, um, I'm gonna, I guess phrase my question just a little differently than I, I did with Terry. Um, a few years ago, uh, both the investment advisors to the two trusts um, advised the, um, trustees to expect to see, um, about a six point two five average rate of return over the next ten years. So we're seeing these significant returns and so that leads me to believe that we're going to see some negative returns in the future. Um, and that's kind of where my question was going with, uh, with Terry. Um, are you seeing things a little differently now? Um, in, in that ten-year span, and I guess that, that started about, I think it was about three years ago. Uh, both of you were expecting the, uh, average to be about, uh, six point two five.
Yeah, so I got to hear Terry's comments earlier, so I have the luxury of knowing that you're gonna let me off the hook when I tell you I have no idea what's gonna happen in the next six to nine months. So I would echo a lot of those same, those same comments. And it comes down to valuations. You know, we're, we're not as stretched as we were six months ago. And that seems crazy to think because the market's, you know, thirty to forty percent higher than it was six months ago. But you've seen a pretty significant recovery in earnings. So if you think about it, you know, the, the valuation metric that's used for the markets, a lot of times it's the PE ratio, so it's price divided by earnings. So if a stock's trading at thirty and it earns two bucks a share, that's a PE of fifteen. You know, the PE on the S and P right now, I think is north of thirty. And if you look at that bell curve in terms of, um, senior deviation, you know, we're way out to the right. We're not as far out to the right as we were in two thousand or two thousand and seven. So that doesn't tell us that a market crash is imminent, but it does tell us that we're probably going to have more muted returns going forward. So if we're expecting to earn, just to make the math easy, six over the next ten years, and we've earned fifteen in the last three, then I'm probably in the three to four percent range for the next seven years. And that kind of ties out not only to the asset allocation forecast that, that we utilize with clients, um, but there's another, uh, there's an actuary firm in the East Coast called Horizon Actuarial that does a study every year. And I can send it out, it's pretty interesting reading. But they interview thirty-nine different firms, thirty-nine different investment consulting firms and consolidate their return assumptions. Um, and for example, their forecasted range for US large cap stocks was negative two to positive ten, which tells you that somebody in there, um, hates the world, right? That's this negative two forecast and somebody out there is, um, I think drinking a little too much of the optimistic Kool-Aid to say plus ten. But like the average range was five to seven, which is lower than the longer term, kind of eight to nine, maybe flirting with ten percent. Um, so to make a long answer short, going forward, I think we're going to see more muted returns just because there isn't the value, there isn't the valuation there that can be created. But if we've learned any lesson in the last thirteen years, and I say thirteen years because that encompasses, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and it encompasses twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one is, when the Fed says they're gonna do whatever it takes, that's a tremendous, um, push on the equity markets. Right? That creates a floor from a valuation standpoint because it means that they're gonna do whatever it takes from an accommodative action standpoint to push things higher. So in the near term, that tells us things can, can get a little bit better. On a longer term, that's why we need to look at things like we're gonna have more small cap in the portfolio than large cap because valuations are more attractive. We're gonna look at things from an international standpoint because valuations are more attractive than the US. We're gonna look at more from a real estate standpoint. Uh, you know, the Terra Cap that we recommended a couple of months ago. You know, the idea being is here's, here is an investment manager, an opportunity that can generate solid returns, but aren't tied back to the market's gotta go up tomorrow for us to make a positive return. And then things like private debt and some other pieces that we'll talk about, that's just pulling, pulling pieces of the asset allocation away from large cap US stocks and into asset classes or investment managers or investment structures that can generate a good return decoupled from the stock market.
Hey Brian, I got a question for you. I'm probably gonna ask this every year, but the elephant in the room's always gonna be our hurdle rate as long as we're on the high side of what everyone's using. When you start, when I start hearing things about getting creative with private debt and stuff like that, the first thing that comes to my mind is whether a seven point two five percent hurdle rate is gonna continue to be appropriate in the future. How, how are you feeling about that hurdle rate right now?
It's high. I mean, here's, look, you're, on a national basis, it's in line. Around the state of Michigan, on the higher side now.
And, and that's where to me, it gets harder to defend that. And, and when we start talking about, again, get creative with private debt or, you know, locking up Olio and almost illiquid real estate type deals, that, that to me is the first clue, we need to start talking about the hurdle rate again.
So I'll challenge you a little bit on that. Um, you know, first, from a liquidity standpoint, um, you know, if we had ten percent of the portfolio in illiquid investments, you have ninety percent of that portfolio available tomorrow. Like literally tomorrow, like it's daily liquid, so you've got ninety percent of your assets available to you. Um, you know, we're spending five to six percent a year in net negative cash flow. So in kind of the worst case scenario, you know, let's go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine and say the portfolio was down forty percent. You've still got six years of cash flow that you can cover without having to worry about touching illiquid assets. So it really becomes a conversation around, if I'm gonna lock it up, am I getting paid for it? And that means more education and, and more discussion around it.
Does that, does that still hold true even if we anticipate heading into a decade of expecting to earn under our hurdle rate?
Yeah, yeah, because.
You see what I'm saying though? It just starts getting, you start feeling shakier about it. It, it just doesn't, doesn't leave you with the warm and fuzzies.
Here's where it comes down. If I look forty mix of stocks and bonds, so kind of that gold standard of, of long-term asset allocation. Um, and if you think about it, every decision you make to move away from a sixty, forty blend is because you think you're gonna generate a better return. So adding real estate would take money out of fixed income. Adding private equity would take money out of, out of equities. On a long-term basis. We have that. Trying to get to like 7% or higher. You would have to lower the return to six and a half percent before you pick up any more success in, in meeting it. So in other words, like you're either going to make it or you're going to, you're either going to make it or you're going to miss it by a mile. Like being at six or six and a half or seven. Does not increase the probability. From a historical standpoint. That you're going to have a return. At or above it. It's the, these asset classes and, you know, exploring these other asset classes, what it really does is. Increases the likelihood of success. I could give you an asset mix that would get you to seven and a quarter. But you would look at the piece of paper, crumple it up and throw it in the trash. It would be legally permissible under Public Act 314. But as a fiduciary, as a prudent investor, you'd look at it and say, there's no way I'm putting 50% in emerging markets. 15% in value add real estate, 15% in private equity and the rest in, in fixed income. You know, that would solve for 7.25. But there's no way you should do that, right? Like that's. That's not an appropriate portfolio. Tom would drop me from the meeting immediately if I suggested that.
I, I think, I think I'm following you, but I almost. Think I missed something. You're saying if you put together an asset class that. Achieved a high enough probability hitting 7.25, we'd crumble it up, but that is our hurdle rate. So. Is that? Am I hearing what I think I'm hearing?
For what's available to you. For what's legally. Legally permissible for you to invest in. So as an example, you can put up to 70% of your, you can put up to 70% of your portfolio into global stocks. So in theory, you could have 50% of your portfolio in emerging market stocks, right? And that would be. Legally allowed under Public Act 314. I would quickly tell you that I don't think that's prudent. But in terms of the toolkit available to you under state law. You could have an asset allocation that would be 725. But it would not be a prudent. Investment allocation.
And that doesn't lend us to talking about whether we should lower the hurdle rate from 7.25?
I think that, that's. That's a conversation the actuary is going to force upon you for sure. In the coming months.
Yeah. Okay.
The beauty is, you know, so look, from a fiscal year standpoint, we're looking at a 25 to 26% return. So the, the. I can't think of a better way to describe it than the gift that the markets have given us in the last year. Because I don't think anybody expected for us to be talking about numbers like this, given everything we've gone through and continue to go through from a. From a social standpoint. So the gift we've gotten in terms of a fiscal year return. I think is going to allow us potentially lower. These soon greater return. Without having a negative impact on the funded ratio.
Right. And that's a conversation that I see coming. I just wanted to get your thoughts on it. So.
Yeah. But please understand, if it were. You want 100% probability. That number needs to be low, single digits. I don't think that's prudent.
I, I understand that. I'm, I just. Yeah, okay. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Brian. Julie, you had something?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not good. Um, Brian. Let's just clarify. The, the six, 625 basis points was for a 10-year period. The long-term rate of return is still at 7.25.
Correct.
Inappropriate, somewhat for seven, 7.25, because we talked about moving it to seven. But it's not in that 6.25. 6.25 was only a 10-year period what the expectations were.
Correct.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Brian? All right. Well, thank you, Brian. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Brian, because we have set the date for the next meeting at this point, I would. Request that you leave the meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you. Brings us to legal. I will turn it over to Tom.
All set. Thank you. Nothing.
Thank you. Brings us to other, which we again, for this board as well, city clerk determined an election is not necessary for the police fire representative. As Brett Nelson was the only person running. His new term will expire 5/31/2025. We have. Seen the presentations. From both advisors. Regarding the consultant review. Are we prepared to have a discussion about this at this time? Is anyone ready to make? A motion? Where are we at?
I'm, I'm ready to have a discussion about it if everybody else is.
Okay. Should we start with, with the pension? About Terry specifically and SCI?
Yeah, I think that one's a little easier because they've exceeded. Their performance has exceeded the index. So. I don't think there's as much discussion to be had there. They're doing a pretty good job. It's my opinion.
I agree with that. Anyone else have any concerns? Okay. Julie. Did we need to make a motion then just to acknowledge continued? You're muted. Was that a yes? We do? Julie, you're muted.
If you could just. Maybe in the motion, say that you reviewed the performance and. And that SCI is beating the indexes would be some good language, I think. Thank you.
And then, and then if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Then at the next meeting. You know, because of the official pension meeting side, then you could just wrap up the, the due diligence process by recognizing that continuing. You know, continuing with SCI. That'll be in that formal minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion that Julie just outlined. Do I have support?
Brett supports.
Thank you, Brett. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the. The healthcare side of things. So we're. Four years in. So I don't want to have any discussion. On this. I think it's, it's pretty evident that there's. Concern on this side. Again, I guess it's just a. For me, it's a time thing. I don't want to rush into anything and make a rash decision and not give. You know, Brian a. A real shot at this. And then the second part is. You know, how fairly can we make judgments on what's happening if we're not really giving him full control of the reins?
Well, I think, I think we pretty much have up until this point, right? We, we talked. Before about how long it really takes to appropriately evaluate a manager, if I remember correctly. We pretty much decided about five years was the minimum amount of time before. You're not. Your. Sort of nuances and how a particular manager performed. So I don't. I don't think we're at the point after four years where. To, to evaluate them based on four years and, and seek out a different manager. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting close in my opinion. If, I think we gotta really keep a close eye on it now. So, and I, I'd be a little bit apprehensive, given the underperformance to. Have him start putting money into things, a lock of liquidity and. I want to evaluate some of these decisions. A little more scrutiny than maybe we otherwise would have in light of the underperformance. But as far as. You know, whether we completely just. You said, give him full rein. I, I don't think it's a blanket. Decision to give him full reins, do whatever he sees fit to fairly evaluate him. I think after. After four years of underperforming the benchmark, we've got to be a little more thoughtful in what he's doing with the money.
It's a fair statement and I agree with that. I think he said that if we were to make these changes, it would, it would lock us up for a year. Does that sound? Sound familiar?
We're talking specifically about the real estate.
Right.
Thing I. We probably need to ask him that. My memory, I don't remember it being a one-year. Thing. I thought it was, I thought we were basically locked up until we could sell it essentially. But I could be wrong on that, but we need to figure that out.
Okay. So are we all in agreement that we, there are, there is obviously concern and reservations, but. At this. This point, we're not ready to make a change. Is that a fair statement?
That, that's how I feel. I feel we're a year or two away from being able to make a. An intelligent decision on that.
Okay. I think Julie was first and then Paul next. You're still muted, Julie.
If I could just expand on that just a little bit. With Sizer. As part of the portfolio, that is the portfolio's downside protection. And we have not seen a real. Plummet in the stock market, which was the anticipation based on. Both Terry and Brian talking about an average rate of return of 6.25% over the. 10-year period, which started about three years ago. There was an expectation of a correction that we. In my opinion, I don't think we really saw it. I, I think they were expecting at least a correction. So that's the way this portfolio is stacked a little bit for that downside again, because that's what was being anticipated. A few years ago, and we, it never really materialized and things are happening that they did not expect. So I think with it stacked like this a little bit and maybe given it another year, getting to that five years. And then there's another year of, you know. Some of these returns and some of these values and the, and the pricing. Maybe finding a correction point there. We will perhaps see. Some decline in the market and then perhaps some improved performance relative, relative to the index. Thus this portfolio looking a little better. So. You know, I, I, I think, you know, giving him another year is prudent for many reasons, especially that reason. Waiting for some market losses and see how it performs because. Again, the way this is stacked and built is that we're going to see less losses relative to the index when we do see. You know, a market correction.
Okay, thank you. Those are good points. Paul, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, here's my view. I, I take the long view. Lee, I would have to, I'm a little concerned of the. The language that you use, that it sounds like we have less confidence. I, I think Brian gave a good explanation. And furthermore, I, I'm not interested in micromanaging them. So I thought he gave a pretty good explanation and so let, let's stay the course and we need to reevaluate this. But I don't want to put a label on there that we have strong concerns or I, I'm not sure exactly what you said, but. That's, that's the only thing that causes me pause. But do we need to stay on top of it? Absolutely. But you know, let. Let, let's show him that the confidence that he's making the right decisions and advising us correctly.
Yeah, sounds good. Kyle, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I kind of feel the same as Paul either, you know, we, we let him. You know. Do what he needs to do to get us where we want to be. And give him the freedom and the confidence to do that. And then if we. We're feeling like there's time for a change and we do that, but I think going halfway only inhibits our ability to. Maximize the results that we're looking for.
I agree.
I would just add. Maybe I use too strong language and I don't think we should go halfway. And start, you know, putting a squeeze on everything he wants to do. I just think that after, you know, a four-year running average of underperformance. I'm not going to have a rubber stamp for everything that. He brings forward. I want to, I want to be thoughtful about it. So. It does shake your confidence a little bit is all I'm saying.
Okay, sounds good. I think we're all in agreement. Maybe I have. Misworded a couple of things, but I think overall we're generally feeling the same things across it. So. I'm comfortable making a motion to. You know, consider this consultant review complete. And move forward with, with Brian continuing to use him as our advisor for this. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Support by Brett. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I get clarity on that resolution? Is that going to be until the next normal review process? Unless otherwise brought up, or do you want it?
Was the next one? I think a year from now.
One year from now?
Is anyone opposed to a year from now?
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Did you have anything else to add under other Julie?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. The date in the next meeting has been set as Friday, June 11th. 11:38 or 8:30 AM or immediately following pension board meeting. This time I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Support by Brett. Thank you. All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 9:29 AM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good one.
Thanks.
Weekend, guys.